Let's see, we will open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jerojiji. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous people from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. Okay, and with that, we'll move on to a roll call.
Mayor Burgel.
Here.
Councilmember Costellano. And, um, yeah, I think Derek needs to do that. We'll wait till the end of the roll call, but we need to allow Councilmember Costellano to unmute. Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloitte?
Here.
Councilmember Costellano.
Here, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And would all who care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and is there a report out of closed session?
In closed session, Councilmember Costellano announced that she was out of the area, traveling for work, which isn't allowed attendance through Zoom. And on a motion by Councilmember Fernandez, seconded by Councilmember Bauer, the motion passed to allow her to participate through teleconference.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
And no other reportable actions were taken in closed session.
Great, thank you. Mayor's announcements, we have a proclamation for the Volunteer Appreciation Month. Councilmember Moulton? Or is that you? And if you would like to come forward, please, volunteers?
Is someone here to receive this proclamation? Thank you, welcome. City of Eureka Proclamation and Recognition of Volunteer Appreciation Month, April 2024. Whereas volunteering of one's time and resources has traditionally been and continues to be an elemental part of the essence and tradition of our country and is essential to its spirit and vitality. And whereas we are a community of people who thrive on helping each other towards the shared goal of a better life and future for all. And whereas volunteerism is increasingly recognized as an important partner in government and industry in doing the work of the nation. And whereas volunteerism is vital, fulfilling, and enriching to the participants as well as to the recipients of the service and should be encouraged for the benefits to all the community at large. And whereas the city council recognizes the value of Eureka's volunteers, a dedicated group of individuals who are vital to the present and future of our community. Now therefore, I, Katie Moulton, on behalf of Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim, declare the month of April 2024 to be Volunteer Appreciation Month in Eureka, in honor of the volunteers' hard work and selfless dedication to the city of Eureka, making it a better place to live and work.
Eureka Volunteer Patrol is 29 years old.
Do you want to get the picture? And then take your phone.
Smile.
There you go. Thank you. And the mic's on him.
Great.
Are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay, it's an honor to accept this award for the Eureka Volunteer Patrol, which is 29 years old. It was reorganized after COVID and we're going strong again. We still do traffic control for parades, fires, traffic accidents, crime scenes and such. We're always looking for more volunteers to join our group. And I want to thank Mayor and the city council for honoring this group tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you. Chief, did you want to say a couple words?
Can I, after the next proclamation?
Yes, you may. Okay, and so our next proclamation is National Safety Telecommunications, and that is-
Councilmember Bauer, come on up.
So this is in recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, Sunday, April 14 through Saturday, April 20, 2024. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Eureka Public Safety Communications Center. And whereas, public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety dispatchers of the Eureka Public Safety Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I, Scott Bauer, on behalf of Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, declare the week of Sunday, April 14 through Saturday, April 20, 2024, to be National Telecommunications Week in Eureka, in honor of the dispatchers whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, appreciate it.
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, so first and foremost, we would like to thank the city for the recognition. In 2023, the Eureka Police and Humboldt Bay Fire Department Communications Center answered 115,205 phone calls that came into the center. They created 70,144 calls for service for police and fire first responders. 6,750 of those calls were for medical assistance, in which the dispatchers provided emergency medical instructions. From the moment a call comes in, these dispatchers are the first responders, which each call, they save lives, comfort the afflicted, and bring hope to the hopeless. Their ability to remain composed under pressure, think critically, and make split-second decisions is truly remarkable. They are the lifeline that connects our community to essential emergency services, and more than that, they are each other's lifelines. This last year has challenged all of us in different ways, but through it all, the dispatchers have been a team. The amount of support, encouragement, and commitment to each other that this team displays day in and day out is an inspiration. There's not a day that goes by that I'm not awestruck by the amazing dispatchers that make up this team and grateful for each and every one of them that answer the call. Their compassion and empathy set them apart, and they go above and beyond for the city, the citizens, first responders, and each other. They are two heroes, and may they continue to answer the call with the same compassion, skill, and dedication that they always have. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the chief of police, there's probably no prouder day or prouder moment than when your employee's going to be recognized by the council, by the city, by our community members. So it's a very proud day for me to be able to sit back, watch my communications supervisor give a speech, listen to my volunteers talk about what they do and how long they've been doing it. So I'm extremely proud of them. They work very hard for our city. Our volunteers do amazing things every day. They give it their time, which is one of the most amazing things anyone can do, is give it their free time to come help the city, come out in the middle of the night. We have walking patrols that go around just to be eyes and ears in the community. And then we are dispatchers. If you haven't sat in the comp center, 2:00 on a Monday or a Friday when a traffic collision happens, and watched the absolute amazement that happens when the phones start ringing and things start happening, it's truly mind-blowing. I sat there the other day with two of them and just sat back and watched, and they got done, and I'm like, you guys rocked that. That was awesome. And they're two of our new employees. So the training they get, the job they do, is absolutely incredible. So as a chief police, I'm incredibly proud of everyone we have at our department. And also just want to say this week, we'll be recognized in our animal control officers as well for Animal Control Appreciation Week. So just amazing things are happening at the police department. We're doing the best we can for our city, and we always will. So thank you for the recognition tonight and taking care of our employees.
So I do have a couple things for my mayor's report I want to comment on before we get started with everything else. I was able to attend a community school's town hall, and what that looks like is, it was put on by True North, and it's looking at solutions for our kids. You know, our kids have, you may not know this, but our kids at school sometimes struggle. We may remember that from our high school years and school years. But this whole program, what they're doing is they're working with disadvantaged and other children, just children in general, to bring things forward like transportation contracts, belonging circles, those types of situations, to create a healthier environment for our youth. And what's interesting is the transportation contracts, so they gave two examples. One of the children was gone like 39 days last year. This year with the transportation contract, they've been gone one. Because they have a way to get to school. Because oftentimes, you know, parents may not be available to get them there in those types of situations. And the thing that I took away from this conference, there's so much good work happening, and I look forward to being a part of that moving forward. But one of the people that was there from Stanford, one of the speakers, she said, "You need love to learn." And her name is Dr. Linda Darling-Hammon, and the truth is, that is absolutely true. If you don't feel safe in your environment, if you don't feel like you belong, it's a lot harder to learn. So I really appreciate True North for coming forward with this and really starting to embrace these ideas and that with these town halls and with this participation, we're going to be able to move forward. And I did talk to Senator McGuire's office today about how we can move forward on this because, again, you know, our kids are our future, and I think it's really important, especially in these times, that we really do whatever we can to honor them, to value them, and to help them feel those things inside of themselves. So that was a blessing. The next thing is that, on the opposite side of that, is April 26th, this, up at the Boys and Girls Club, in the morning, I think it's at 8, is Child Abuse Memorial Day. And that, I'm going to tell you, is always a very difficult thing to attend, but it honors the lives of the children that have died at the hand of child abuse. And there are far too many. There are far too many. So again, I really appreciate these programs that we're trying to create and to move forward so that our kids have a safe place to be and feel like they belong and feel valued. Want two more things? So May 4th, put it on your calendar, our Town Hall, Embracing Humanity, will be happening right here at City Hall from 10 to 3 or 10 to 4. We have Skid Row to CEO Joe as our keynote speaker, but prior to that, we have two panels, one professional and one lived experience. This is a partnership with the NAMI, which is National Alliance on Mental Illness, and Department of Health and Human Services. We always love having them as a partner. Collaboration is how we get things done, and so working together in this regard, I think, is critical. Everybody is welcome. Zoom will be, you'll be able to access through Zoom as well, so we hope that you're all here. If we fill the room to capacity, Miles is buying me a car, so everybody is, please come, bring all your friends. We really appreciate that. I already have a car then. And then, lastly, I just want to let everybody know that on the 25th, which is next week, I think, I'm going to be having surgery, so I'm going to be off work for a while. But I can still be reached by telephone, so you can always call me, and many of you have my cell number, and if you don't, you just call the number here and it'll go right through. So I'll still be available, I just won't be available. So I just really appreciate our community and the work that we're doing to move forward, to help people to feel valued and important and like they're worth something. I think a healthy community lifts each other up, and that's what we're working towards every day. So on that note, I'm going to turn it over to Project Manager Jeff Davis for our homeless action plan discussion. Thanks for being here, Jeff. I mean, Project Manager Davis.
Tonight I'll be providing an update for our homeless action plan and the progress that has been accomplished since November of 2022, when it was implemented. All right, and the homeless action plan is located on the city's website and is accessible there on the Uplift Eureka page, and these are the shared values of the homeless action plan. And I'll just do a brief overview, kind of goal by goal, and update with the progress. So the goal one was to increase the availability of affordable housing for community members that are experiencing homelessness. And the city has been partnering with private developers who create permanent affordable housing on suitable city-owned properties, I think evidenced by the pro-housing distinction that the city received here recently. Recently, the Laurel Canyon opened up here on Myrtle and 7th. It's 36 new units of affordable housing, and there are several other sites and several other private developers that we're working with to reach the goal of having over 300 deed-restricted affordable housing units by the year 2028. The city has applied for some funding through Home Key and others to secure funds needed to convert hotels and motels. We have not been successful yet, but this is a priority for staff, and we will continue to search out and apply for that funding. And let's see, the staff in economic development are currently finalizing programs for ADU accessibility and help financially, and they hope to complete at least three units by the end of this calendar year. And we are moving, staff are moving forward with the assembling of transitional housing units out on the Crowley property here in Eureka. There are several already assembled, and we're making progress every week. Next month, there will be a final shipment of the wet units, the restrooms, the showers, the laundry, and all of the units, the in-suite units where there are bathrooms in each one of those units. So they'll be delivered towards the end of next month, and if we continue this progress, there'll be a potential move-in date of July or August of this year, and that's enough for 40, up to 40 individuals that are currently living in encampments along the waterfront trail here in Eureka. And that same shipment is going to deliver showers and restrooms for the Blue Angel Village here in town as well. Second goal was to increase the engagement with individuals experiencing homelessness, and staff have been busy conducting surveys. This is a point-in-time count year, and it also is a year where the CSAT, Uplift, and Care staff collaborate on conducting surveys, so have a lot of data right now that we are analyzing, and once that's analyzed, we apply that data to our outreach and our different programs. The point-in-time count is not available yet. I believe it's due to the federal government by the end of this month, so those numbers should be available pretty soon. And yeah, like I said, we analyze and apply that data to our outreach and our different programs. The Uplift Eureka Resource Center, there are infrastructure improvements currently underway over at the municipal auditorium, and we're hoping for an early July opening of this resource center. It'll be located on the East Street side of the muni offices, and it'll be a wonderful place for folks to go and community members come and to be connected with resources and services. So that is, yeah, progress is being made every day, getting closer to opening that. The Crisis Alternative Response Team was implemented and went live back in January of 2023. It's, I believe council's received many updates on the stats from that program, and it's been a success. Managing mental health clinician, Jacob Rosen, is just a bit of, and his team have just had a phenomenal, have been doing a phenomenal job, and currently there is, they are hiring for an additional mental health clinician, so if anyone's interested, there is an employment opportunity there. And I think this is a little, a goal for further down the road is to incorporate a, like an EMT or a paramedical response to that. So staff is looking for and working towards securing funding to make that happen, but that's a little bit further down the road. The third goal is increasing community education engagement and resource awareness. So in addition to council reports, staff has been presenting at Rotary Clubs, Women's Clubs, Elk Lodge, Eureka Main Street, Chamber of Commerce, and many others, and we're definitely available to continue doing that. We're also working with local media and to, so there's more to come as far as implementing a public relations campaign, and we are increasingly more and more active on the social medias, kind of getting the word out of all the things that we're doing here. See, staff continues to hold de-escalation trainings, and also the Town Hall series was implemented, and yes, the next one is coming up here very soon, the Embracing Humanity. That's coming up on Saturday, May 4th, from 10 to 4, right here at City Hall. Some other programs, the Ambassador Program is currently in development, and we're looking to implement that hopefully in July of this year. The city of Eureka is now a part of the Neloxin Distribution Project. We're a certified distributor of Neloxin. There's a supply down in City Hall in the lobby. In this last year, we've really stepped up our extreme weather overnight warming center program. It was implemented for the first time last year. We've made some improvements, and we've expanded. We're working with two different churches or faith-based organizations, and we activated that this year multiple times, and it was a great success. And just want to take an opportunity to thank all the volunteers who volunteered their time to make that such a successful program and really provide that no-barrier, low-barrier overnight warming centers. Our Job Skills Training Program is also kind of stepping up into like the second tier of specialty training. We have our Job Skills Training Culinary Program should be implemented here very soon, and probably the end of July, early August, and those are just a few of the new programs that we're continuing to work on. Goal four is to expand Uplift Eureka's Rapid Rehousing Program. We've been continuing to operate Rapid Rehousing. We've been doing this since 2019, and we're, you know, I think through five different grants, we've been able to house over 200 people. Since this last update, we've housed 56 individuals through our Rapid Rehousing Program, and we have a very strong focus on providing those supportive services and following the Housing First Principles. 56 is a lot because these folks are the ones that have the highest needs, that are most vulnerable, and it's not just securing housing and helping folks move in, it's providing that supportive services, ensuring that they're able to stabilize, to be connected with the services, and keep that housing permanently. We are continuing to reach out to landlords and trying to house as many folks as possible. And there are several grant proposals that have been submitted and that we're waiting responses on, that we've demonstrated a lot of success with securing grant funding, and we're going to continue that trend. And implementing a homeless prevention program, this is something that our Uplift Eureka Program has not done, and we have just secured funding to operate this program. We expect to execute a service agreement next month, and then by June, implement this program where we will be able to provide financial assistance to folks that are at imminent risk of experiencing homelessness. And we'll definitely, when we get, after we execute that service agreement, we'll be advertising and spreading the word about this wonderful program that, yeah, hopefully by June, will be up and running. The sixth goal is to expand our partnerships and collaborations with organizations providing services to individuals experiencing homelessness. The city of Eureka has been on the executive committee of our COC, the HHC, for some time, but recently we've really become more engaged. We're on several committees, including the Coordinated Entry Systems Selection Committee and the Coordinated Entry Systems Policy Committee, and this is just a great opportunity to work with local service providers. There's over a dozen that are very active, and it's great having those relationships and being able to work together towards a common goal. And yeah, it's just ongoing through that Coordinated Entry System, that committee, there's a lot of opportunities to work closely with each other, and really the outreach plays a huge role in this, and whether it's connecting folks with Home Key units, with other permanent supportive housing units, outreach has been able to go out and connect folks, get them to appointments, making sure that all the documents are signed, and really it's played a crucial role of, once someone's name comes up on a list, to be able to go out, locate them, and then walk them through that process. It's not an easy process to go through, and so it's just, I just have to give a big shout out to our stellar outreach team and what they've been able to accomplish. And then goal number seven is addressing environmental impacts and public health and safety issues related to homelessness. This is, let's see, something that, like I said, is ongoing with our outreach team, and it, our Crisis Alternative Response, in the second box there, that was implemented back in January of '23. Recently, the city hired a full-time harbor operations technician who works very closely with EPD to address these issues, and that we're also working very closely with the Eureka Rescue Mission and their team to do targeted trash removals throughout the Old Town Downtown area, and addressing the environmental degradation that will continue, and I think we're going to have a more focused approach once that Crowley property project opens, and then there will be a big push for kind of restoration and keeping that area nice and clean. And then finally, the last goal was to utilize relevant and available data to identify trends in the homelessness services provided by the city of Eureka. This is something that is definitely ongoing, and we're constantly analyzing data trends. And I know that Commander LaFrance is, we just finished this last survey, and there's a lot of data that we're going over, and sharing that with the CSAT, the Uplift, and the Care Teams to really have a very focused approach and connect the individuals that need the help the most. Some other things that are coming up, our Pathway to Payday Program is another program that the city has partnered with the Betty Quanchin Homeless Foundation over several years now. We're continuing that. There's, next week is the next job skill, I'm sorry, the next Pathway to Payday Program, and we definitely need businesses for that. We have quite a few folks that are interested that are signing up, and so if there's any, anyone in the business community that is, has an opening, having a position, it's a wonderful program. You can come down for one day and conduct several interviews and find some great candidates. I believe that concludes the, a brief overview of many of the things that the city has been working towards in the last 18 months.
Thank you, Manager Davis. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Director Davis? Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, Jeff, great job, great presentation, and thank you for, I mean, you've been really instrumental in a lot of these programs, Uplift and Care, and it says a lot that our city's doing as much as it possibly can to help people that, you know, are in need. I have a question about housing. Is, how long of a waiting list do we have? I've heard we have a waiting list for housing, but- I've heard we have a waiting list for housing, but I haven't heard of a number.
So we don't really refer to it as a waiting list. So through, if you're going through the Coordinated Entry System, they, there's a priority list. And those are folks, there's a few different things, but it's, they use the VI Spadat Score. So if you're an eight or higher, you're eligible to go on the, and you're currently experiencing homelessness, you're eligible to go on this priority list. Priority list is over 900 people long right now.
Wow, okay. Thanks, Ben.
That's within the county.
That's countywide, correct. And yeah, there, and that is, the same list is for Rapid Rehousing Programs, for Permanent Supportive Housing Programs. Hopefully the intent with, with this prevention money is we can, you know, reduce the amount of folks that are entering homelessness and then also, you know, continue our work to assist folks and provide those Rapid Rehousing Opportunities.
Anyone else? Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, so you had discussed the Goal One projects and I was curious if any of them are low or no barrier for those facing addiction or substance use issues. Because I know we've been able to do that with our, our warming centers or the inclement weather, however we parse that. But do we have anything substantial coming here in the future for those same folks?
You know, for our, for our transitional housing project on the Crowley, that will be, you know, we're following housing-first principles for that. And that is going to be a, a very, very low barrier on that. I couldn't speak to the details on several of the, the different projects through like Link Housing and Sunset Heights. I don't know the, I don't want to misspeak and I don't know the details on that one.
Yeah, and those, you know, we went after a Home Key Grant. Project Manager Davis described that we were going after a Home Key Grant to provide 60 shelter beds. That would be no barrier, allow for pets as well as couples to be there. Unfortunately, we made it pretty far along the process and at the end didn't make it. We're hoping that Home Key Four does happen. And if that does happen, we would pursue that again. The only reason why we weren't able to get that is because they didn't believe that we could operate the facility. How's that hairdo? Couldn't believe that we could operate the facility with the budget that we had proposed for the final three years. And we were very confident that we could do that. We tried to explain that to them and it didn't work out, so we'll sharpen our pencil and go after it again. But that would be a huge benefit for our community if we can get that.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm aware and I'm very grateful. I'm sure the city is too for everything that Betty Chin does, but there are certain barriers there that doesn't.
I think that all of them, you know, we don't have many shelters that have kennels. I know that the, the one thing that isn't necessarily our project is a navigation center. That contract has been finalized. They're working on the final plans for that. And I think that the shelter beds there, the DHHS will be overseeing, will be no barrier. There won't be many of them. I believe it's 13, but we're working on that.
And then you had also referred to a homeless survey. Was that the point in time count that you were referring to?
So yeah, there were two. There were, the point in time count happened in, I believe it was late January. And then that's just a one morning. It's pretty much from 6:00 AM until noon. We have as many teams as possible go out and, and, you know, conduct a, a count. And then after that, it was between, I think it was four weeks between March and April. This city staff went out and conducted their, their own independent survey. And that data, that just ended and that data is being analyzed currently.
Okay, so that's the one that you're referring to that's pretty fresh. Okay, I appreciate that. And then in, in one of the other slides, I forget which, which set of goals it was, but you say that we collaborate with a bunch of organizations and a continuum of care for these. And I was curious, you know, outside of the Betty Chin Center or, I'm forgetting some of the others right now, but who else we may participate with in those?
Oh, so within the, within the COC, there are several organizations. Let's see, there, you know, the DHHS, the Humble County Department of Health and Human Services is there, RCAA, Nation's Finest.
Arcade House.
Arcade, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, Arcade House. There's at least a dozen different organizations that, that are, that are there. AHA is, is on that committee as well.
And Catcher too, no? They participate on.
Yeah, there, I don't know if they're, have a seat at the executive, on the executive committee, but they do. There are, every other month there are, are general meetings and there are quite a few folks throughout the community that, that attend those.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Manager Davis, for all of the work you're doing. I know it's, takes a lot to do, to do so many things. We really appreciate it. The priority list, is this the same list that the Housing Authority also uses to place people in housing?
See, that's, that's separate. I believe for the Housing Authority, you do not need to be currently experiencing homelessness to be put on that list. So, and they have several lists depending on the number of units. So if it's a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, there's, there's separate lists for that. There's lists for vouchers. There's a few different types of vouchers and there's also lists for their housing. So this is a separate list.
And so these are 900 people who are currently experiencing homelessness in the county who are on this list?
Correct. I believe it was 939, last I checked.
And just so we're clear, when they say 900, that's by the McKinney-Vento definition of homeless. It's not necessarily unsheltered. Could be people living in hotels, could be people living on couches. That's not all unsheltered.
Yeah, that makes, I mean, yes, thank you. That makes sense. And then, gosh, I'm trying to remember when it was, maybe about a year ago, we discussed, you know, camping sites, you know, basically sanctioned camping sites. And I know that there was kind of been, there were some community members that were working on that or kind of there was a call out to see if there are other interested community groups in participating. Did anyone ever have any success in bringing that forward? And if, if not, what, what do you think the obstacles were?
I mean, not to my. Yeah, we, we held that, as part of last participatory budgeting, we held that workshop to discuss the process at which you could do authorized encampment. We had preliminary discussions with AHA for a little bit. That was not followed up. And then we had a discussions with an individual that worked at the dining facility and I forget his name. We provided them with the outline, with the zoning, where things could happen. Provided them with all of the work that Councilmember Castellano and staff worked on with AHA from a period before to kind of give them a template and we, we've yet to hear back from them. I have had discussions with other representatives of AHA and continue to tell them, you know, what the framework is and how it works. And we haven't had any follow-up yet.
Okay. And in terms of that, there's, there is some possibility for, I know there's legislation passed that allowed churches to use their parking lots for sanctioned camping potentially. Is that true?
I, I don't know if the state law is in there. I'm not familiar with that. But our emergency shelter ordinance would allow for that, as long as it's not in the coastal zone. Like we presented before, basically every zoning designation outside of the coastal zone would allow for that and that would include churches.
Okay, great. Yeah, and I'm, I'm very excited about all of the work we are doing. So, so thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Conchera Stiloch?
Just mostly, can you hear me? Just mostly a comment. I just wanted to thank you as well as everybody else that's, you know, putting all this effort and energy into it. I don't think I knew very much about this prior to being, I knew a little bit about what the city was doing prior to being elected, but to really kind of have a much closer view of just how much energy and effort and dedication is going into really helping a very vulnerable population. It's, I think, inspiring and I just really appreciate it. And I, I think it's really impressive because some of the stuff that the city is doing is not things that the city has to do, but it is stuff that is being done. And with us being kind of the county seat, so many of the challenges land here. And I'm just appreciative and want to thank staff, all of you who are working with the community that's gathering into Eureka that needs help. And yeah, so thank you.
Okay. Well, I too want to thank you so profusely for all the great work that you guys are doing. And you know, sometimes I'll be talking to folks and they'll say, you know, the City of Eureka, these people in Eureka, they do nothing. And what I would say is pay attention because a lot is happening in our city. A lot of good things are happening in our city. And you find what you look for. Thank you. So moving on to public comment. So this is the time allotted for members of the public who wish to be heard in matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item. Following the staff presentation of that item and pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. And I just want to let you folks know before you come up that HNI Street from First to Second Street, we actually have an agenda item on that. So that is something that you can comment at that time. I know that there may be people here that want to comment on HNI Street going south and you're welcome to do that at this time. So just to, to let you know. So anyone here that would like to comment in the audience? Come on up. Welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Claudette. I've missed you guys. But I definitely have been praying for you. Any opportunity I get to boast about Jesus is what I, I do. I go wherever I can to talk about him and to bring hope to others. I was one that was hopeless before. I even had mental illness before. Let's see, probably about 10 years ago. Diagnosed bipolar and borderline personality disorder as well as depression. And it was only by the grace of God that I stand here today, free from any medication, free from any of those mind issues. And I'm very grateful that he's restored my mind. And I know back in the day, I was even court ordered to take medications. I was on 10 different medications because of my problems. But I'm here to tell you that there is hope and it's only through Jesus Christ that, that I am free from that. And the hope is, is because he's not a respecter of persons and what he's done for me, he can do for anyone. And that's the good news is because I'm free, I can now minister and help others to find freedom in him. And it doesn't have to necessarily be mental illness. It could be anything. Because you know, Jesus said, "I've come into the world as a light and anyone who believes in me no longer has to stand darkness." I fully believe that in any darkness that is exposed in my heart. I'm welcome for him to show me so that I can come into the light with that darkness. And I know many of the problems you guys are talking about, the homelessness, I've been homeless. And I know that when I was homeless, it actually was on purpose so that I could actually feel what homeless people experience. And I did it. And I know for me, not having anything as far as a home and bills and cars and personal things, because I had none of those things, I truly had everything because I had Christ. And my desire is to share him with as many people as I can and I will boast on him anytime I get an opportunity. And so I thank you for allowing me to have even three minutes to talk about him. And Lord bless you and Kim, I will be praying for you for a successful surgery. Amen?
Thank you. Nice to see you. Come on up.
Hello. My name's Brett Ross Losnick. I'm a third-generation Eureka resident, contractor. I'm a teacher, landowner, business owner. So I've a brother of a homeless person. So, a foster parent. So I, I've been living my life, trying to help out, you know, that's kind of what I do. So about five years ago, I bought a piece of property, remodeled it, fully remodeled it, fixed it up, picked up all the needles, got rid of all the transients, built a big fence. During that time, people kept coming through, building inspectors, the, the engineering department inspected the sidewalk. They did everything. Everything was legit. Everything was fine. So I rented it out. It recently changed hands. Somebody from the Housing Authority had contacted me, said we had somebody who wants to rent. We vouched for him. He's a foster parent too. So we rented to him. He had a major mental health break, which after four months of me renting to him in my recently remodeled house, solicited a police response where they came and kicked the doors in and pretty much, you know, killed him in the house. They drove their armored vehicle on my sidewalk, did probably about $25,000 worth of damage to my property. So after about two days, I get a certified letter in the mail from the city saying that my fence that was there the whole time for the remodel and everything was in the city's right of way and that I had to cut it down. Well, I had 14 days to do it. I'm like, geez, thanks. You know, that's, that's how they do business. So keep calling them. Nobody calls me back for two weeks. Then I go in, finally make it in between the hours of nine and four. And I've been getting the runaround from the building department on getting a permit to cut my fence down and do all this stuff. I just ask that you guys make the building department open their doors and have a standard in-person application process. Their online application process hinders everything that you guys are trying to do with private employee and, and everything. And not being able to talk to anybody is just really frustrating.
Thanks for being here. Hi.
Jeff Harris, Sacramento. Been in Eureka three years. Since this did come up as a topic, but it's not an agenda item, I'm going to say a couple of things about the homeless issue. Now, I believe it goes beyond merely a housing issue. There are some behavioral issues which tend to derive as an expression symptomatic of mental insufficiencies malfunctioning. Okay, I'm just going to mention three incidents which are associated with this community. There are examples. One I read about, one I observed, and then one I more directly experienced. Okay, so in February, someone was found across some Jack in the Box on Broadway, deceased. Forty-eight years old. They tend to have short life expectancies. Okay, it was natural causes. Don't really know much about that one. Okay, two, I was walking down Myrtle. I see a person with no shoes, blanket, staggering along. He's going to keel over pretty soon. Sure enough, there he is on Harrison. I actually walked by Good Food at Ramones and was combined. Wasn't for him. Okay, it was for a car crash. Then I see the cop there. There's a mess here. He's picking him up. This guy is, you know, past, OD'd or whatever. Cop looks indifferent. I, I feel disdain. Okay, so there's that. Okay, on the side of the road. Then I'm at a house on Myrtle, okay? This guy comes up to my mailbox, opens the gates, sits down, starts doing his thing, got the gear on, play along, say, "What you got there?" He says, "The double drug." Wants to share with me. I said, "Well, so many of them. Which one?" He says, "Fentanyl." So there he is, smoking fentanyl on foil, on the steps there by the mailbox. Okay, I called that one in. It's, it's very toxic. I've actually run about a dozen folks off. Okay, we've had squatters my place. We've had plotters across the street, next door neighbor, Humble Hand Foot Therapy. I spoke to a lady who was serving at the soup kitchen over by Bray Center. She says, "Like every three days, they'll bust out a window downtown." I spoke to a guy at the Science Swag Place. Said, "Yeah, someone had taken out his electrical system, couldn't do business for the day." Down at the Dorney Center, guy comes in off the street. He's having an altercation with a lady who works there. Says he's going to pick up the rattan, start swatting her customers, talks them over. Cops come over. We, so we called them. He said, "Well, can't nobody do anything?" And somebody wants to press for assault because he assaulted one of the customers there. And it gets to be disturbing the peace. Okay. Another time, walking down Fifth Street, there's a stabbing over by Shell Station. Okay, so there's behavioral issues. It's not just a housing issue. Okay, so we're talking about 900,000 people out of a population of 130,000 people. Okay, let's think about how much medical is needed, how much legal. I know a guy who works at the hospital. A lot of them come in, they demand a disproportionate amount of care. Okay? So it's not just the housing issues. There's drug addiction issues. There's mental health issues. A lot of these folks have served time. I'll walk down the street. I'll just say, "Hey, you served time. You're homeless." I can tell them, just convict swagger, passive look on the face. It's very obvious. I can spot them like about 50 milliseconds. Okay? It's not just a housing issue. Okay?
Hi, welcome.
After I left a previous meeting, misinformation was given to council and public. It was stated, previous measure money was still being collected at the rate of 5% and the supplemental tax was being collected at .75% when it is .125%. I believe you'll find the budget policy passed is subsequent to Measure H, and again, not part of the original intent or the ballot question approved by voters. I provided council a copy of the information received from the state of California regarding supplemental taxes collected through the end of March 2024. That has amounted to 9.439 million and change this fiscal year. Last fiscal year, Measure H income was 12.349 million and change. I remind council of the screenshot from the budget presentation of the 2023 Financial Advisory Committee I provided you previously. It showed Measure H funds as $7,524,014. Over 4.85 million, 40% of monies collected were not shown to Measure collected under Measure H were not shown to your oversight committee, the Financial Advisory Committee. 4.85 million dollars just disappeared. On top of Measure H monies collected, additional assorted transaction and use tax collected this fiscal year to date totals 1.892 million. The lack of transparency and accountability is directly traceable to the fact there is no appreciable oversight for these funds. I watched the Financial Advisory Committee meeting last year, the Measure H presentation took all of three minutes. I've read the job description of the Financial Advisory Committee, and what they are allowed to do is extremely minimal. They can give advice if they're asked, but they can't audit. They have to live with what the city gives them, and they can't do anything with the budget. When the city's representative says, paraphrasing, "We figured if we can use this money for street repairs, we can use it for street projects, and no one raises an eyebrow." There's a problem. And that was said at more than one presentation. The best for use for this money is found in the ask for this measure to pass. Preserve the vital services, police, fire, 911, medical, and homeless assistance. I want the transparency and accountability you promised. I want to see the 12-plus million and how it is allocated in the budget presentation. It's been said by the city that not all Measure H money is shown. That's not transparent or accountable. Your subsequent budget policy was not part of the ballot question. You have a fire department that is losing personnel at an alarming rate to other fire departments, a clear indication they're underpaid. Yet you have over a million dollars set aside to fund street projects from the 60% of the Measure H funds that was shown. This is not what Measure H funds were for. Create a real standalone citizens oversight committee. The need for one has been made extremely clear.
Thank you, Judy. Hi there, welcome.
Thank you, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board and Mayor Kim. My name's Nada Roy, and I'm a Humboldt County citizen and Eureka property owner. And I'm an Olympic gymnastics coach by trade, 34-plus years, and back in the day, a professional rollerblader for 10 and a half years, three times world champion. I have a fun proposal to build a ice skating rink at Halverson's Park and a roller rink. And the roller rink to have an oval incline banks, so the roller derby could practice on it. And also, rollerblading for speed skating is now in the Olympics, and that would also be a great way to exercise as well and practice. And speaking of the Olympics, they're in France, in Paris this year in 2024. And they're going to be in LA in Huntington Beach in 2028, which means the Olympic torch will be going to Canada. And ideally, it would be fantastic, especially that skateboarding, rollerblading, all of these new alternative sports are in the Olympics, and surfing is actually in Huntington Beach to skate down the bike path with the Olympic torch. Now, the second part of the proposal is to finish building the bike path that connects to Arcata. Since Arcata already came halfway, I thought it was up to Eureka for us to finish it and kind of unite this amazing bike path. Also, if it's possible to make it a superbike path where you could have like exercises, like fitness exercises on the side of it, different, so if you're skating or biking, you could go to the right and you hit a little lawn tramp, as long as it's under two and a half feet, you don't need insurance and it's okay. Then you skate back into the path, you go to the left, there's some loop-de-loops, some humps, then you skate back into the bike path. You have some handrails that you could hit up. After a while, you could also have some bars, so you could practice your bar skills, some traveling rings, conditioning. So it would be kind of like a fun place for families to go and bike and skate and be healthier and happier. So thank you so much for
Thank you so much for being here.
And I would love to speak to you some more about this and make this happen.
Your time is up, hon, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Kim, appreciate you.
You betcha, you too. So are anyone else from the audience that would like to comment? Seeing no one, let's start with Shannon Townsend.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I'm here, I'm out of my comfort zone entirely, but I'm going to continue to come here and I'm going to continue to speak on this subject because I don't know what else to do. I contact Congressman Huffman, Senators Butler and Padilla, President Biden, Vice President Kamala Harris. I even contact Secretary of State Antony Blinken through the proper channels every day and voice my concern as a constituent, and it runs on deaf ears. The truth is that you all are the only elected representatives who are not bought and paid for by a foreign power. It sounds crazy, but it's really true. And so I come to you to ask you to please acknowledge that what we are doing, what the United States of America is doing in Israel and Palestine is wrong. It's wrong no matter what way you look at it. No matter if you didn't know about this conflict until October 7th and you thought everything started that day, it's still wrong. Nothing that could have happened on October 7th would ever justify what the United States of Israel is doing in Gaza and increasingly more in the West Bank. Now, there are a number of cities that are acknowledging this, they understand that this is going to go down in history books as a really, really bad thing. And they want to be on the right side of history. Arcata is one of those cities. I'm hoping that Eureka can soon be one of those cities. I think I've mentioned before that Arcata has passed a ceasefire resolution. It is, I mean, we're beyond the time of getting a ceasefire. Now, we're now looking at going at World War III with nuclear powers. Iran, Israel has nuclear capabilities that no one talks about. This is insane. I have young children, I don't want my children to be paying for this. I think that we are at a pivotal point in time, an unprecedented point in history, where everyone throughout all walks of life needs to say something and needs to speak up. And I'm asking you respectfully, I know you have a lot on your plate, I'm listening to these council meetings, I know you guys deal with all sorts of things, but we are all connected. The homeless issues, this issue about child abuse, your land acknowledgement, all of that is connected to this issue. Settler colonialism. You name it. I'm not going to go into the details, I think most of you are very intelligent people that understand what I'm talking about. So I'm just asking you to respectfully consider the ceasefire resolution that the city of Arcata passed on March 6. You can access it, I can email it to you, I've emailed it to one of you, Councilmember Castellano. It's very respectful, it's very straightforward.
Thank you, Shannon, we appreciate you being here, your time is up. Is that Shanti?
Yeah, Shanti Gonzalez, hi everybody.
Hi, welcome.
I just, I live near the Samoa Bridge and Halverson Park, and I just want to encourage, it sounds like city staff are already thinking about bathroom facilities and showers for homeless folks, but we just have to step up step up the efforts there because it is a public health issue when people don't have access to bathrooms, bathrooms in particular, but showers as well. And so just want to encourage the city to continue to think about whether these, you know, until these tiny homes are built, until we can actually provide sustainable housing solutions for everyone, we have to figure out how to make sure that people can wash their hands and use the bathroom and take showers. So just want to encourage staff to continue to think about how to step up those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Shanti.
Adina.
Adina.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. I've been to one meeting before, I am the largest activist in Sonoma County, but being that it's an election year and I do support some of our local conservative candidates, they have matters to address within your area in Humboldt County. So I believe that was an inquiry brought up recently when there were two erroneous blog posts posted about me in which some of you commented. So I do want to applaud the young woman that spoke earlier who speak about the importance of spreading the word and understanding the sacrifices that we need to make if we're following Jesus Christ. I am a follower of Christ as well, so that was beautiful to hear her words. Going forward to the other commenter, Ms. Townsend, who spoke about the war between the Palestinians and the Iraqis. This is completely about money, and these motions such as land acknowledgements and what have you are simply virtue signaling. I am a former government employee, so I could tell you this firsthand. And so, as I've stated before, current incumbent Congressman Jared Huffman, who represents your area, is funded by the J Street PAC, which is a Zionist group, they actually just blew him to Israel. So this is entirely about money, and as much as we say that we care about BIPOC individuals as the Democratic Party, that's not true when it conflicts with the funding behind these narratives. I was looking for clarification regarding matters within the city of Eureka. I did find from previous years in the early, it must have been around 2010, that Councilmember Fernandez was the lead organizer for Occupy Oakland, which is featured on the National Anarchy website for being one of the most violent protests against police. So I know he's stated in the past he's not an anarchist, so I was looking for clarification. I also came across articles and an actual video of footage with Mr. David Cobb, who was a local influencer in the area, who admitted that he is an anarcho-communist. So being that, you know, the funding behind these political narratives is evident, I'm just looking for further clarification. God bless you and thank you very much.
Thank you. Caroline.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for the presentation on the Homeless Action Plan. It's always really cool to see what is being done, I think a lot of that stuff happens kind of behind the scenes, so people don't know about it. I'm a resident of Eureka, I'm also the director of the North Coast Environmental Center, so I wanted to touch on a couple of the environmental issues that were brought up. Specifically, the issues of trash and waste in natural and wetland areas. And I have a, what could be a really simple solution for this, which is to provide waste disposal receptacles for camps and more public bathrooms. Picking up trash and waste after the fact is way more labor intensive, it's a lot more difficult, and it also creates unsafe living conditions for humans and wildlife that could potentially be avoided by simply providing services for folks. That could be trash bags and even somewhat regular trash pickup at known encampments. The NEC works with a couple of camps in Arcata, which are in green spaces and sensitive habitats, because much like in Eureka, those are the underdeveloped and undeveloped spaces, that's where people can find a place to be. And on the occasions when we've been able to supply large dumpsters and coordinate with additional volunteers for a big cleanup, every single time, by the time we show up, the dumpsters have already basically been filled because the residents are so excited to have trash service. They have reached out to us for this trash service. And I think part of the reason why our cleanups are successful is because we have, I mean, aside from the fact that nobody wants to be living in a giant pile of trash, but that we built relationships with the folks who are living in the camps, we've worked with them to actually prepare for and plan for the cleanups, and we've engaged them in that collective work of taking care of the land. So by providing the resources that people need and are asking for, and like I said, that's how we got involved, people reached out to us, so there are folks who are really asking for these services. And by engaging them in doing that work, you can do a lot to heal divisions and build back some of the dignity that has been stripped away from people living on the streets. And basically, and there just needs to be more public bathrooms, and they need to be open more often, period. So we encourage you to provide more dumpsters, open up the bathrooms, and engage unhoused people in cleanups, but also in the native plant restoration, that's one of your goals. Unhoused people spend a lot of time outside, and a lot of the folks that we work with have really deep connections to the land and an interest in stewarding it and an interest in the plants that are around them. So engaging and hiring unhoused people to do brush removal and plant native plants could be a really fantastic way to help people feel connected and valued, which seems to be a really big part of your plan and a value that the city of Eureka is operating on. So thank you. And I agree with the previous speaker, let's finish the bike path between Eureka and Arcata.
Thank you, Caroline, thanks for being here. Relena?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, welcome.
Thanks for the great presentation on the homeless outreach. I just wanted to bring up a previous project that HCOG had spearheaded in terms of capturing stories in regards to housing homelessness and the housing crisis. In regards to connecting with local media and PR to capture stories for this project. That was in one of the goals, Goal Three, to increase community education and awareness. That I just wanted to bring this previous project up so that it might be continued and expanded upon. There's a lot of resources and efforts that's been put into a lot of these projects, and it would be nice to see some of those continue forward since so many of the goals are aligned. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you see anyone else, Pam, on Zoom? Okay.
No.
And one last shot, does anybody in the audience want to come up and share? Okay, seeing no one. We will return to the consent calendar. Notice to the public, all matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22. If a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request should be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items, and I'm not aware of anything being pulled. No? Okay, so I look to council for a motion in a second. Move to approve the consent calendar as written.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second, please vote.
And council member, thank you, unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. And moving on to legislative action correspondence, were you going to be talking about this? Or we'll... Okay, so Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, so before you, there are four bills, AB 2081, AB 2121, AB 2574, and SB 913. And they're all really trying to increase transparency on substance use disorder treatment facilities. So cities, and this is, and I bring these forward because CalCities has been looking at this pretty hard, and that's the organization that our city belongs to, as well as all, most, 95% of cities in California. And so they're really bills trying to make sure that communities have a say in how facilities are run, where they're sited. It's really... It's really, and these are all supported by CalCities. So I thought they would be a good thing for us to look at, discuss, and hopefully support these, these actions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Councilmember Bauer or Councilmember Fernandez?
It's, it's more a question about procedure, whether we can endorse these in bank or if we have to do it separately for each one.
I was looking for consensus probably, and I mean, unless, if it's for all four, we can do one, you know, by consensus, you approve all four. Or if you want to delete one or change how you support, we would need them separately.
Well, then, just to get to that, then, I, I did read what Councilmember Bauer had sent over, and I'm in agreement with everything that's been demonstrated there. These are for residential treatment facilities, correct, in neighborhoods particularly? And so it adds to the transparency for those particular facilities, allowing for the city to investigate any sort of complaints as well. Yeah, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I wasn't speaking directly into the mic. So just to clarify then, Councilmember Bauer, could you, could you tell me a bit more about these in terms of the transparency that they're supposed to offer?
Well, let me see. I mean, each of these have, let's see here. You know, oh, well, first, in SB 913, it allows, it develops a process that would allow cities to request approval to conduct site visits. So my understanding, I don't know enough about the issue other than that we can't just go do that. Like if we have, we have a complaint from somebody in our, a, a community resident, we can't just simply go investigate. We'd have to get approval from the state. So it allows us to have really more oversight and more transparency within our own city. Let me try and find another one here to, let me see here. Trying to think of something good here. SB, AB 2081 would basically require the operator to disclose on his website any legal disciplinary or other enforcement action brought by the state. So again, people, people within the vicinity would understand if there's, you know, the operator has had problems in the past. So, you know, things like that, they're just kind of simple, community-based solutions for people to have a, a understanding of what is occurring and whether, you know, they should be concerned about the operator more than anything. It seems like the operator is, is the big issue, not the residents of these facilities. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about the AB 2121. This one I was, this is the one that's talking about making sure that the city is notified when a license is issued for alcoholism or drug treatment facility within their jurisdiction, and then also maintaining a 300-foot distance. The question I had about that is, is that what are they, what is included in the definition of an alcoholism and drug treatment facility? Does that also include the, I, I don't recall exactly what they're called, but they're kind of like halfway houses, which I have some in my neighborhood. And this, so I'm, does it also include those?
I think that's what...
This is what they're referring to?
Yes.
So, so then I guess my concern with this, and I understand because in the second paragraph, the other two I support, but my concern with this one is in that second paragraph that says, however, due to the profitability of economies of scale, these facilities often expand in neighboring residences, creating multistructure campus-style facilities, even though they are zoned for single residents. And I obviously understand the implication. There's a lot of, there can be potentially a lot of profitability in these types of things. And so there's an incentive to really expand and to grow and to kind of change. And I'm guessing that neighbors are probably upset about it, kind of changing their neighborhood into a campus-style facility. I will say this would affect a number of areas on my actual block, should something like this go into effect. And I, and why I want to bring that up really quick is because I've lived there for seven years, and we've never had a single problem with anybody that lives in those homes that are navigating this. We have on my corner three, so, and they, we share an alleyway with them, and zero issues that we've ever seen, and the properties are maintained, people are very friendly. So I, I understand because, but I also am like a little concerned about how that might actually affect some of these things, even actually in our own area. And just because there's already so few, there isn't enough of these facilities to begin with, to even begin to help the number of people that are dealing with this. I just worry about the negative impact of this. I, I'm not comfortable with this one, but I do support the other two. And, but I don't feel like I know a lot beyond that, but that, those are my concerns with that one.
Well, and I, to answer to that, I think, you know, what the author says here, the overconcentration can undermine the goal of using residential neighborhoods as a therapeutic environment. So in, in your instance, seems like it's okay, but I think it's happened. Well, I've heard of stories, you know, where they essentially fitting four people to a room and, and really trying to maximize, you know, their profitability.
I know, and it is kind of a strange thing because like, so that 300-foot requirement, no homes in my neighborhood have probably more than, you know, 20 feet between each of us. And so, you know, 300-foot requirement would be, you know, partway down the block, four houses away, or three houses away, or whatever. And so I, I guess I'm just pointing out kind of maybe one of the challenges of that and how that would actually impact even just like a neighborhood like mine, where it really hasn't been problematic.
Councilmember Castellano, and then I have a comment.
Hey, this, this is mostly a process question. If we're trying to get consensus about putting this on a future agenda to approve or if we're trying just to give a general approval of all the letters tonight. I don't have them before me, so I, I feel like I would personally have to abstain if, if the latter were the case. It seems like there's enough discussion that it might, unless they're time-sensitive, it might make sense to put them on a future agenda, but I'm, you know, happy to defer and abstain if it's better.
So that's the reason why we put it on this, because I believe there's some, whether it needs to be on this one, I don't know, but there is some time sensitivity to this. I don't know if you recall, but we amended our agenda to allow for this specific thing because we were finding ourselves to be in situations where we want to support certain legislative actions, but the timeframe for our posting and those type of things don't allow for that. So we put this on there to allow for time-sensitive things to be on there. I emailed this out to council, I believe, yesterday. And we do have it available here, or maybe it was the day before yesterday. No, that was a Sunday. That can't be right. Anyway, either way, I did mail it out beforehand. But yeah, that's the, this was brought up typically. We didn't have, we don't have the time to print them out before, and this has been just an item, it's a standing item on the agenda that allows for this.
Yeah, I know. I, I realize that. Just sometimes we bring it back, sometimes we don't. So I wasn't sure what the ask was. My phone died and I forgot the charger, so I couldn't read them. So anyway, I, I appreciate the discussion, though, and so I'm going to let council continue to discuss.
So I'd like to speak to what Councilmember Contreras Deloche was speaking to. Years ago, when I first got on council, I was looking at clean and sober living, not living there, but actually how they function and how they work, because I was getting complaints from people that were living in them. And those complaints were that those places are run similarly to an innkeepership. So say that I move in on the first or the third, and I give you my GR money, and I'm going to live in this place, but I decide I'm going to get loaded in four days. They can kick me out, and I don't get my money back, and so I'm kind of just out there. So I, I'm grateful that these things are finally coming forward, and hopefully that this type of situation is going to create more accountability and more safeguards for the people that are actually housed in these places. And I've been in them where they do. They stack them four to six people in a room sometimes. You know, at 250 bucks a, a pop on a, on a, on bunk beds. I mean, it's just insane how much money people make. And like I said, I've been looking into this for a long time, and I'm grateful that something is finally coming forward that can address these very difficult issues.
Councilmember Fernandez.
I, I appreciate your passion, Mayor. I, I think the concerns that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the concerns that Councilmember Contreras Deloche was sharing were more around the language in the overconcentration bill, and that she seemed to generally support the remaining three. And so I'm, I'm willing to make a motion to, what would it be, to approve, to endorse? Support, thank you, to support Assembly Bill, or the letters for support for Assembly Bill 2081, Assembly Bill 2574, and Senate Bill 913.
Second. Okay. Was there any further discussion? I thought we were just doing consensus.
Actually, we just need consensus.
Oh, we just need consensus, my bad. Okay. It's been a while since we've done this.
Point of order. Thumbs up, thumbs down.
Yeah, thumbs up. And then as for the, oh.
Are you abstaining, Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah.
And then, and then I'm willing to discuss 2121 a bit more because I think my interpretation of it was just to keep it from overconcentrating in one particular neighborhood. My interpretation of it is that it would spread this around because if we're talking about economies of scale, it's like you just don't want one neighborhood to be like, well, that's the, that's the neighborhood where we send those drug-addled folk and those people who have substance abuse issues. Yeah. And so it would be like, yeah, let's spread that around so at least, you know, our community's lifting each other up from that perspective.
And a quick response to that before I call on Councilmember Moulton is that it is true in my neighborhood, too. They have put in several clean and sober houses without actually identifying them or telling the neighbors. And so looking at how we can get it more transparently with these things, I think is critical. Councilmember Moulton.
I just wanted to ask Councilmember Contreras Deloche, are you afraid that this is going to increase, like, NIMBYism? That people are going to see this and say, and use this as a tool to prevent any clean and sober houses? They absolutely use it as a tool already. So, and I will say that even when we were purchasing our house in our neighborhood, some people were like, are you aware of, you know, what you're going to be sharing an alley with? Are you, are you aware? And so I think, and that's part of the reason why I want to say publicly, too. We also have a number of homes that are dedicated to caring for adults with disabilities in our neighborhood as well, and they are, they're stacked, you know? The, meaning that I would say a third of the homes that I share an alley with fall into these two categories that I've just outlined. And we do not have problems with our neighbors. We do have problems with foot traffic that cause problems with, you know, crime and other things like that, but our neighbors themselves are not an issue. And so, yeah, I think that's my concern with that is I think this sounds in some ways, and I realize this may, the scale of this in other communities may be really something, and so I get that. And oftentimes, some of the legislation we see is because somebody is seeing this on a scale in a large city that we aren't seeing here. So I, I understand that. I just kind of wanted to speak to, I would hate to see, and I, and I know there is some exploitation, there is with adults with disabilities as well, exploitation. But I would hate to see there be less housing safe place options for people who are trying to recover and get their lives together under this idea that this is a bad thing. You wouldn't know, walking past or driving past my neighborhood, that that's what these homes are. But I know what they are, and they're, they're not problematic. They're clean, everybody's been polite, and we've been there seven years. So if there was going to be an issue, I think we would have seen it. Knock on wood, we really just haven't. So, yeah, that, that is a lot of my concern.
It's nice to have a clean addict and alcoholic in your neighbor as opposed to one that's not, I suppose.
So do we need consensus on this one, too, or? Would you, would you like consensus, Councilmember Bauer?
I mean, we don't comment on a lot of bills. And so I'm comfortable with just letting this one go. I, I think a assembly, a assemblywoman, Bonta, a assembly member, Bonta, you know, her husband's Attorney General, and they're both passionate about what they do. And I, I trust that it's a good bill, but I'm also okay with just letting, letting it go by.
Any further comments or? Okay. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. H and I Street Director Girving, direct node, City Engineer Willer.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I am going to be presenting on modifications to the H and I Street one-way couplet between First and Second in a moment, in a quick moment. All right. So let me see if I can get control here. There we go. That was the one I was using until now. Okay, here we go. So overview, I'm going to talk about the why and some project background. We'll discuss, discuss buffered bike lanes and look at existing conditions and proposed concepts for the corridor between First and Second. So why? That's a big question that comes up. You know, why, why are we doing, why are we doing projects where we are, you know, focusing effort on bike facilities and putting up, you know, pluses and minuses where these facilities go in our city? So to talk about that a little bit, for years, since, since I've been at the city, council has, and I'm sure before as well, has been advocated for increased and dedicated bicycle and pedestrian facilities, whether that's trails, like through Quarterfront Trail, or bike lanes, or other type of facilities that are located in our roadways. A driver for that, a big driver for that, is safety. There's, we have, we, just like many cities, have collisions that include cyclists and pedestrians. And when there aren't dedicated facilities for those users of a right-of-way, that causes conflicts with motor vehicles. So when you can have a network of facilities that people understand what they need to do within the right-of-way, whether that's a motor vehicleist, a cyclist, pedestrian, or other users, it creates a safer environment. There are also other benefits. There's benefits to active transportation. It gets people out moving around, and it also provides other means for getting around the city other than just motor vehicles, gives people an opportunity to use means that are less carbon-heavy. From the, kind of the, the details perspective, City Council adopted in January of 2023 the Complete and Green Streets policy. And I'll read an excerpt out of there, which kind of like, really, I think, covers why we do these type of projects. Under this Complete and Green Streets policy, the city shall direct and design, construct, reconstruct, repair, and maintain efforts on the city's roadways, bridges, pathways, and sidewalk, creating a comprehensive, integrated transportation network that is safe, accessible, comfortable, accommodating, and welcoming to all users. So I think that summarizes a big part of the why that we do projects like this. So specifically talking about the H and I corridor. A big driver for this project is creating a corridor in our city from Waterfront Drive all the way to the south part of the city. This will allow for connecting the north portion of the cities and Old Town Downtown to neighborhoods throughout and to Henderson Center and neighborhoods to the south. The first phase of this project is in its final run with the construction and with the construction on H and I, which I'm sure you're aware of. Currently, we're in installation of lane lines and buffered bike lane striping and traffic signal improvements. This will take the section north of, or sorry, south of Fifth Street down to Harris and drop a single lane to two lanes and create a buffered bike lane throughout. To complete the corridor, that, that section is, you know, north or south of Sixth Street. The section that needs to be completed is between First Street and Sixth Street. And in order to install bike facilities in between First and Second Street, we have to address the condition between First and Second first. Before we get to that, though, let's talk a little bit about buffered bike lanes. In our toolbox of design ideas, design, our tools, buffered bike lanes are a tool that is one we use. A couple of components of that is a level of traffic stress, and kind of wanted to show where buffered bike lanes... where buffered bike lanes kind of fall. This is a very rough diagram, but on the left-hand side, you see where cyclists are within the travel lanes, going to the right-hand side where you see, you have buffered bike lanes before the, the final slide on the right-hand side where you have cyclists protected from vehicles by a median or a hard barrier. So when it comes to the level of traffic stress, which is the, the feel that the cyclist has on the roadway, buffered bike lanes are to the, to the right there. Another consideration that we have when we look at H and I Street, which you don't have for all of our streets, is that it's a wider right-of-way. It is a 70-foot wide right-of-way where traditionally the city has 60-foot wide right-of-ways almost entirely throughout. So it's, it gives that opportunity to actually include wider facilities and safer facilities without compromising other parts of the right-of-way like parking or other travel lanes. Existing conditions. So H and I Street between First and Second, starting with H Street, what you see here on the left-hand side to the north would be First Street. You'll see that the street, H Street, is two lanes heading southbound to Second Street. And then from Second Street, heading to the south, you'll have a single lane with parallel parking on the east side and diagonal parking on the west. And that condition to the south of Second Street continues to Fourth Street. And operates fairly, it operates fairly well from a traffic standpoint. The proposed condition for this section between First and Second Street is to remove one of the two lanes and add in buffered bike lane and diagonal parking. So this configuration would be, as far as parking in a single lane is very similar to what is between Second Street and Fourth Street, which again operates fine from a traffic standpoint. But this, this, this change in configuration allows us to add in a generous buffered bike lane facility that will be very much similar to what is going in place on, right now, on H and I Street between Sixth and Harris. Jumping over to I Street, similar condition, but this case going northbound, we have two lanes that come up to First Street. Again, to the south between Third and Second, you'll see a single lane with diagonal parking. And then, in this case, we have two lanes with parallel parking on both sides. In the proposed condition, we've, again, dropped from two lanes to a single lane, matching the condition to the south. We've added in a buffered bike lane, and we've added in diagonal parking, a smaller amount due to the change in the width. There's a wall on the section between the alley to the north of First Street here, very built-up embankment there that doesn't allow additional right-of-way space there for diagonal parking, so it will continue to be parallel parking. I guess one thing to note while we're looking at this diagram, as far as the details go, the buffered bike lane is approximately seven feet wide in the area where the, where a cyclist would travel. There's a buffer of about four feet that would separate the cyclist from the traveling motor vehicles. And then there is a two-foot buffer between the, on the east side between the bike lane and the parallel parking lanes to help avoid, the concept known as dooring, where when a parallel parked vehicle would open its door and then provide the potential for a cyclist to hit that door. So by providing an extra buffer there, it helps mitigate that condition. Let's see, I, I believe that's about everything I have on that topic. I jumped ahead of myself, so I'll finish with a recommendation. The recommendation you see here is in your agenda packet, and I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Molton?
Hey, thank you for the presentation. Just to make sure I'm reading this correctly, the bike lane remains is, is the bike lane on the same side of the street above and below Sixth Street?
It changes, actually, and we're not quite through designing that all the way. This, we're, what we're really here, the essence, essence of what we're here today, and I'll get to your question just real quick, is to the reduction of the lanes, so going from two lane to one lane, and then also the addition of diagonal parking. We're still working, and when I say this, we, we know that we need to do some coordination with Caltrans between Fourth and Fifth to make sure that our, that these facilities, the buffered bike lanes, really operate with those signalized intersections with, you know, the very busy, our busiest streets in Caltrans streets in Fourth and Fifth. And we want to make sure that we have good, that we have good design coordination with them and that we can hope to have them come to the table and work with us on some of the configurations there. And then when you are north of Sixth Street, as you mentioned, and pass, or I should say north of Fourth Street, when you're outside of that corridor, there is a jog from one side to the other because of the, the way the diagonal parking between First and Fourth flips from one side to the other, so you have to move the buffered bike lane from one side of the roadway to the other. And we do that by a bike box at the intersection, which is a standard way that you are able to move cyclists from one side of the street to the other, or at an intersection allow them to make a turn in that case. But that's, so it does change from one side to the other.
I see. I was afraid of that. Okay, thank you. Wait, is there a reason that it has to be that way? Or can you explain to me the reason, please, why we couldn't just have them go straight across instead of crossing sideways across the street in the busiest intersections in town?
Yeah, we wouldn't do it at the busiest intersections of town at all. We would not make that crossing until you get down between Third and Second. So you're much lower volume of traffic down there on Second and Third, and it would just be one crossing, you'd just cross once, basically. But because of the way the parking and everything's configured and the hardscape down there, you have to, you have to move it, or else you'd have to go down and reconfigure, reconfigure all the parking between Fourth and First, or at least some of it in order to make it work.
So by hardscape, you mean like the big brick planters and things like that that are already, the stuff that's already built there?
Correct.
Thank you, okay.
Councilmember Bauer?
Quick question, I don't, maybe you said it, I didn't hear. Is the diagonal parking adding parking? Or is it a no-net loss or?
It is adding some parking, it's not a huge amount. It's adding about four spaces between the two streets. So not a huge amount, but is that certainly adding parking down there?
Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
And these, these plans for the parking just pertain to those, those streets, First and Second between, or, yeah, H and I between First and Second?
Correct.
Okay, and so do we have any plans on experimenting with that and going further? What way would that be? In the other direction? In the more residential direction along H and I?
Currently, no. Once you get south of Fourth and Fifth Street, you have a much larger flow of traffic. So we've, we've already, we've gone, we just now have, as of today, we've started making the transition from three lanes to two lanes. And having that additional added buffered bike lane kind of fills out the right-of-way with parking on both sides. I think if you wanted to try to accommodate something like adding diagonal parking down there, you'd have to look at eliminating parking on one side and start to kind of reconfigure the roadway a little bit more so, much more so.
I'm just sure any number of us are gonna get asked questions, well, you changed it downtown, is it gonna look like this in front of my house now? And the simple answer is no.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but between Second and Third, they have the similar diagonal parking at both H and I.
Are you good, Councilmember Castellano? Great. All right. If there's no further questions from Council, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anybody here from the public who'd like to comment on this item? Come on up. Hi.
Hi, Brett again. I fish a lot, and I use that corridor to come up and cross H and I Street with my boat and my trailer and all that. I know a lot of other people do, because it's the safest way to get back on the other side of town. Just wanted to make sure that you guys provide, you know, when you narrow it up, that people with big boats and trailers can make that turn safely without taking out people. It's, all the stuff you guys have been doing with the pop-outs on the corners and stuff is really making it tough to drive around with a trailer on your truck. So I just got ran off the road this morning by a Mercer Frasier concrete truck. So just saying, keep that in mind when you guys are planning, please.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to comment on this item?
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Singh, oh, come on up.
Hi. Thank you, good evening, and I believe this is a great idea, and it's about time to have some green-marked areas for bikers and skaters to safely skate around town. And that way, we don't use our vehicles as much, and it's a great way to exercise. And, yeah, thank you so much. Would love to be part of it. Anything that I can do to help in that area from a skater and biker point of view, I would like to test that out. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you. Okay, on Zoom, we have Colin.
Good evening, this is Colin Fiss with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I want to thank staff for bringing this forward. And, you know, this is a single block, but as Jesse pointed out, this is an important part of connecting the Waterfront Trail and the facilities in that part of town with the rest of town, and it's important that we fill in all those gaps. You know, we do have some design concerns, and over the long term, I think it would be great to redo that hardscaping so that the bike lane doesn't have to switch sides of the street and so that you could provide a, a real protected bike lane, so this is comfortable for all users, including kids. But as an interim measure, it's great that we're providing a facility for cyclists finally and making that connection to the trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. And Matt?
Hi, Matt Simms. I'm a resident of Eureka. My name says Epic, but I'm not actually speaking on behalf of Epic right now. I, I think I'm gonna disagree with Colin. I'm kind of frustrated by this currently proposed design. I think we're sacrificing people's safety in order to preserve parking. You know, I, I would much rather see a protected bike lane than a buffered bike lane. This idea of waiting in a bike box to switch lanes after using what's supposed to be the main way to get across town for cyclists on H and I Street doesn't really make sense to me. I guess I'm, I'm wondering how many cyclists they think are actually gonna use this path? They're expecting everyone to get to a bike box, wait, and then cross the street when there's no cars in the road. Feels like it would be simpler to me to design the streets that cyclists could, you know, stay on the same side of the road the whole way down, and maybe just get rid of a couple of parking spaces in order to make that happen and reduce the risk of dooring that staff talked about. Also just say, I ride my bike around Eureka quite a lot, and on lanes without bike lanes, I get honked and screamed at by car drivers quite a lot, and I think they really wish there was a bike lane there, you know? I'm gonna take all the yelling and screaming that they do at me and pass it on to you guys and say that those are all advocates for bike lanes, who wish I wasn't there right-of-way. So just keep, keep their voices in mind when you're, when you're thinking about, you know, what decisions to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Do you see anyone else, Pam?
I do not.
Okay, seeing no one, we'll bring it, bring it back to Council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. You know, generally, I'm supportive of this, you know, to the two public commenters' questions, I'm curious from, I forget, Director Willer there. Is there, is there a plan to move that hardscaping eventually, or are there options to, to keep the bike lane all on one side of the street? What would that look like?
I mean, there's, there's always opportunities. Right now, with, you know, we're looking at the project from the standpoint of, you know, what would, what would allow us to get the safest facility in with, you know, within some level of a budget? And right now, when you, when you start including hardscape in there, that becomes much more challenging to implement versus striping. And I understand that that's, you know, that, that doesn't, that's not a consideration for everybody, you know, and they, they want the safest thing available all the time, but that doesn't always, budget doesn't always allow for that. And I think it's, it's kind of more than that. We'd have to probably look at having this conversation rather than looking at First and Second, we'd be looking at the entire First to Fourth and talking about changing all the parking and the hardscape, and it would be a different project. Not to say that it's not possible, it's just a much bigger project and a lot more consideration to going to, like, eliminating some of the diagonal parking, going back to parallel parking, some of the hardscape changes, and it just, it would be a different, different-looking project at that point.
And if we move forward today, will that prevent us doing that later? In terms of, you know, like, it seems like this is the most, I definitely see the most affordable way of moving forward today. You know, are there extensive sunk costs in terms of going back and moving the hardscaping and redoing that at a later date?
There's always pluses and minuses to getting something done now versus waiting and potentially, you know, waiting down the road and trying to apply for different grants. But, you know, when we look at, like, the process we're going, I keep coming back to the, the bike planning process we're going right, going through right now, and there's so many facilities across the city that we're trying to look at just creating a corridor period. In this case, you know, trying to create our, our big north-south corridor. And where do we want to focus those funds? Is it here? Is it in another, another area of the city with another corridor? So I think there's a lot into that question, Leslie, but it certainly doesn't preclude us from coming back and installing or changing hardscape in the past. It stripes on the ground, it's not like you're putting in expensive hardscape that you need to take back out in a period of time, you're putting more or less striping on the ground and some signage that would be the, the biggest change there. So relatively easy to change or to, to modify those going into the future.
And could we look at this as part of the, you know, our more long-term bike planning projects?
Yeah, it's, it's included in there. So this is kind of, as we're moving the bike plan forward, this is, this is a part of that, and it could certainly be, you know, that part of it, including a more long-term build-out for this section, could certainly be, would be a part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Molton?
We're, thank you, we're at comments, right?
Yes.
Speaking of signage, I guess as a question slash comment, would there be some signage in traffic explaining what a bike box is and how to use it? Having ridden a bike around Eureka for many years, you do get yelled at a lot, especially by people who think you're breaking the law by being where you're allowed to be. Is there, would, are we at that stage? Can you answer whether there would be signage included?
Yeah, coming soon to an H and I corridor near you, yeah, there'll be bike boxes on the corridor, and there'll be signage associated with those showing you, showing cyclists where to move, which also at the same time will alert motor vehicle, motor vehicle drivers, like, to what's going on as far as how those get used. So the green boxes will be included at many of the intersections along H and I, especially the signalized intersections.
We might look at working with some of these community organizations as well to do a little bit of public outreach and education, like the Share the Road campaign, things like that. And with that suggestion, I would like to move staff recommendation.
Second.
Do we have any further comments? Okay, please vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
Hi.
There it is. I just turned it on. Okay, four yes votes. Councilmember Contreras Deluge dissenting. Motion carries.
Okay, and at this time, before we move on to our next item, generally, we take a break right now, but we only have a couple more items. So does, do people want to take a short break? So we will be back at eight o'clock. We're taking a break. I'm not gonna call her up. Except for I was going to. All right, so welcome back, everybody. Our next item is the Eureka Housing Trust Fund with Director Miller. Our next item is the Eureka Housing Trust Fund with Director Miller. You cutting me off? You cutting me off?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's agenda item, the Eureka Housing Trust Fund is, or I have a presentation to go over a, what a trust fund is about and what it is. So I'm going to begin with, what is a housing trust fund? And then, how is it going to be funded? How are the funds used? And then, what are the next steps? So what is a housing trust fund? It is a new special revenue fund, or a grant fund. Currently, the city uses about 44 different funds. This would be an addition. The purpose of a special revenue fund is to track budgets that have restricted uses. In the housing trust fund, those uses would be devoted to developing and preserving affordable housing through loans and grants within the city of Eureka. How are we going to provide funding for a trust fund? We identified half a million dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery funds. This was the stimulus we received during the pandemic. And then, we have to commit an annual investment of $100,000. And this will be derived from VDU, TOT revenues, or bed tax from vacation rentals. How are the funds used? The funds can be used to create new affordable units, to purchase land for the purpose of affordable housing, single-family and multifamily rehab projects, converting market rate units to affordable units, the construction of accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, first-time homebuyer loans, and pre-development assistance to developers looking to build affordable housing. Funds also have to be prioritized by income. So 30% of your funds have to be dedicated to individuals who qualify as extremely low-income, 25% for very low-income, 15 for low-income, 15% for moderate income. And then, the remaining 15% can act as a contingency to be provided to any of the four categories. So next steps, if the trust fund is approved tonight, would be for staff to prepare an application to the state for their next NOFA. These Notice of Funding Availability, or grant windows, from the state are only provided once a year. We believe that it's going to be opened in the month of May. If successful, this will add an additional half a million dollars to the trust fund. And then, after the grant application, staff will create a local NOFA, so a grant program administered by the city of Eureka. And initially, we believe this program will be used to help fund the ADU program. Eureka builds it. So that is all I have tonight. Essentially, what you're approving is the, you know, the additional fund, the appropriating half a million dollars from the ARPA monies, which we did at the beginning of the fiscal year, committing $100,000 per year to the fund, and then adopting the guidelines that were provided with the agenda item.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, Finance Director. I'm trying to think of, how much are we going to spend per year? That's my main question. So if we have, we don't want to spend it all every year, right? We've got, let's say, 600,000. You know, do we want to have, like, a ceiling? Is there, is there a way to want to keep that contingency, right, is 15%? But we don't want to draw it down every year, or do it, doesn't really matter?
I mean, if we were able to use all of the monies, that would be good, because it would be more affordable housing. But I do think that we would want to at least isolate some of the funds for specific programs. I mean, a large multifamily development could easily absorb that 1.1 million. So, you know, I think it would be in our best interest to set aside maybe half of the funding for the ADU program, and then half of the funding for essentially any development of affordable housing. Just so you, you're aware, in the guidelines, or the guidelines require staff to come to council prior to issuing a NOFA. So during those, you know, introductions of programs, we can decide whether, how much of the pot we want to dedicate.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Fernandez?
Of the, of the 100,000 from the Transit Occupancy Tax to help subsidize this fund, that 100,000, how much does that represent of the TOT? So last fiscal year, we grossed about 3.2 million, or a little more than 3.2 million in TOT overall. So it's, you know, a small percentage of the total.
It's substantial for the, the housing trust, but not so much for the overall TOT.
Correct. And there's nothing stopping us from contributing more than that 100,000. That's just the minimum that the state requires to maintain a trust fund.
Okay.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Director Millar, but the intent of that, that is a good portion of what we expect to receive in TOT from just the short-term vacation rentals, correct? And it's not all of that?
It, yes, correct.
You're welcome. Are there any further questions? No? Okay. Do you have questions?
I will.
Well, this is a question period. So if you've got them, let's, let's hear them.
I didn't bring them, and I can't see. So here's my question. Right now, we're just approving the parameters of this. Is this where we're include, making sure to exclude, like, city staff, all that kind of stuff? Or are we not at that point from participating in this?
Well, that's automatically assumed. It would be a conflict for both council and, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney Black, Deputy City Attorney Black, but...
Yeah, I think the, the boundary between impermissible access to grant funding needs to be thought about a little bit. I'm not sure that every city employee, you know, that much lower levels of influence and income would be excluded. We need to take a look at that. Unless, Lane, are you aware of some rule that's particular to the housing trust fund?
I'm not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
I would say that if they're entering into an agreement of any sort with the city, that our charter would prevent any employee of the city from having a contract.
Okay.
That's what my assumption was as well. I know for sure that deputy, excuse me, management level and council definitely couldn't.
That's what I wanted to make sure was, like, clearly defined, and I wasn't sure if this was the part in the process where we make sure that that's clearly defined, or if that's later on in the process, that we make sure that that's...
Well, it sounds like everyone is excluded by the city charter.
Yeah.
So it would be just a, a matter of noting that in information.
So I assumed as much, so now here comes my real question, but I wanted to make sure that I understood that first, and that is, is there any other groups or organizations that the city works with closely that should also, because of how it would appear, be excluded from participating in this as well?
I think you'd definitely have to take that on a case-by-case basis. I wouldn't want to make a blanket statement about that at all.
Yeah, I don't, it seems like the later on, what happens is when we do things on a case-by-case basis, then it kind of pops up later on in some weird spot, and then staff kind of amends things to sort of make things clear. So I was just wondering if it was something that we could kind of clarify at the outset, maybe, you know, weeks down the line, months down the line, whatever, but...
Without knowing what you're referring to, it would be very hard to answer that question.
I was just thinking, we, we coordinate with lots of different kinds of nonprofits, making sure that we don't have other people that might benefit that would be a conflict of interest.
So depending on the nonprofit, it would, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
And I don't, unless there's an unusual circumstance out there, if they qualify for the income levels and those type of things, and they don't work for the city, I don't see their chance of being a, a conflict of interest.
Okay, thanks.
Seeing no further questions, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to? Come on up, Holly. Welcome. It's nice to see your face.
I'm Holly Klingel. I live near Myrtle and West. And I was aware that I was moving into Recovery Central, as my current stomping grounds is known. I've been there probably about five years. I think I moved around 2019. I'm on my best behavior tonight. I'm, I'm kind of, kind of mixed things on the agenda and this particular item, because I was, I had really thought I wouldn't say anything, because I had a, had a very difficult past six months. I've been MIA, because you meet at 6:00, and it gets dark by 6:00 in November. In October, I chose to take in my adult AOD numerous things, buzzwords, daughter. And it went reasonably well until probably February. And EPD responded magnificently at 6:30 Sunday morning.
So Holly, I hate to interrupt you, I really do, but the...
But this housing thing.
Yes.
Low-income housing. That new complex on Myrtle Avenue, out near my stomping grounds. I understand from a very reliable source that a two-bedroom apartment is $1,200 a month. That's not affordable housing. It's just not. I'm grateful that you're working on this. I'm not going to say anything negative, but this has been extremely educational for me, because I grew up here and came home in 89, and thought, oh, good, I don't have to be involved in politics anymore. Ha!
Well, thank you, Holly. It's always good to see you. No, it is. Okay, so is anybody in the audience, anybody else in the audience like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll bring it over to Zoom with Raylena.
Hi, I was hoping just from the onset that I could have two comment periods just on this one Zoom. I do have someone else here who wants to make a comment after I go, so.
Is that okay? Yeah?
Okay. Well, first off, thank you so much for bringing this housing trust fund to the meeting tonight. I think this is a really great mechanism to help rehabilitate existing housing, as well as build new housing. Considering just the cost of both rehabilitation and new construction, I would advocate for increasing the trust fund, or the TOT allocation, to the housing trust fund in order to better support this funding, as well as looking at different mechanisms to continue the funding source that's outside of the TOT tax, possibly in other taxes for underutilized properties, such as a vacancy tax, or maybe a loan mechanism for certain projects that do draw from this grant. I don't know if that's in the parameters of what is possible, given the state guidelines. But I do think this is a great first step forward, and the different funding groups that are included in here are wide-reaching, and I think we'll see a lot of benefit on different, many different levels, from individuals to larger groups that are making impacts in housing. Okay, I'm going to turn it over.
Great, thank you. So we're going to start the timer again? So just give us...
Hello, my name, my name's Adam. I just have a...
Hi, Adam, welcome.
Thank you. I just have very brief comments. I'm really glad to see that this is being brought up for consideration. I think these are some really important steps to making it so that people can afford to continue living here. And as the previous commenter noted, often what is considered affordable housing is really not super affordable for many people in our community. And if we're able to, for example, use, as Raylena mentioned, vacancy tax or something like that to help further this, to be farther from market rate rental rates, that would be fairly wonderful. We have such a huge number of just properties that are not well-maintained, or are second or third units that people are using for storage. And I think it's really beneficial to our community if we can start to find a way to rehab those, or redevelop some of those lots that are really underutilized and not being used to serve as housing for community members. So appreciate you bringing this up, and I look forward to hearing more about how it can work, and how it can really further the potential of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Do you see anyone else on Zoom, Pam? Okay, so seeing no one else, we'll bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Bauer?
No, I think this is, I think this is great. I, I should ask this question, I'm thinking about whether people would apply for, like, half the cost of, of something, or if the expectation is that it's the total cost of the project, you know, and how that all works. But I assume we'll figure out the process as we go, because it is, anything that we can do to, to increase housing in our community is a good thing. So with that, I will see, make a motion to adopt the resolution of the City Council establishing, establishing the Eureka Local Housing Trust Fund, and approve a new city fund titled Eureka Housing Trust Fund, and approve 500,000 from the American Rescue Plan allocation to see the Eureka Housing Trust Fund, and commit to $100,000 annual contribution from vacation dwelling unit Transit Occupancy Tax revenues.
I'll second. And did you have a comment? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm so excited for this, and I appreciate the expediency of Director Millar and staff bringing it together in time to apply for that upcoming NOFA. And I did also appreciate the not limited to language there, guidelines, that really gives us space to, you know, potentially expand what the housing trust fund could be used for, you know, as different needs arise. Some needs I could imagine arising would be, you know, like, gap funding for affordable housing-related projects. I guess that would kind of be in the affordable housing-related projects category. And then also, potential collaborative fund, regional, the Regional Housing Trust Fund. I know that, you know, I think most folks on council know, but the public may not know, there's, you know, a conversation being had about a regional housing trust fund, and maybe strategies for collaboration in numbers and transit lines and things like that. So I could, I would be hopeful that, you know, if opportunity arose, that it could be used for something like that, in order to build greater regional housing as well. A member of the public brought up vacancy tax, or, you know, or something from vacant units, and that is something, I'll let folks know that we'll be coming back before council pretty soon. So we can't assign something to this trust fund that doesn't yet exist. That's definitely something that council's wanting to look at. Those are all my comments.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Unanimous yes. Unanimous yes, but motion carries. Great, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Um, reports and action items, do we have anything? I'm sorry, future agenda items. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, you know, um, at one of our Cal Cities meetings, I was talking with a a council member from a city of Mill Valley. And they have a a reusable foodware ordinance which allows people basically to bring in their own foodware to pick up food from a restaurant. And um instead of doing something like banning, you know, single use plastics or something like that, I think our restaurants do a really good job of using, you know, biodegradable products and and paper. You don't see styrofoam hardly anymore. But I think exploring reusable foodware, um, I think is worth looking at. So something that maybe we could look at in the future.
So what do friends think? Councilmember Molton?
I just want to understand what you're saying. So we would pass an ordinance that would amend like the health codes to allow people to bring in their own containers the same way people bring in their own reusable shampoo bottles?
Essentially, it it's something like that. You have to look at the city of Mill Valley has it on their website. You can look at it and and it's a pretty cool way to to get food without having to throw it away, throw away the, you know, the foodware when you get it.
So someone has pulled this off.
They did.
We want to maybe look at it.
Yeah.
I'm into it.
Councilmember Charis Deloche?
I think that it is theoretically laudable to have, to reduce the waste. Um, but I know that a lot of restaurants um really balk at allowing anybody to bring in their own non-sterilized, we don't know, because when you go through, you have to go through these food safe trainings. And uh they're very particular about how you clean everything and how things have to be sanitized and and it's to prevent um foodborne illnesses. And I, the CDC says like 40% of flu cases aren't even like flu, it's actually like food poisoning. Um, and so I I just, you know, I have family that's worked in the restaurant industry and own restaurants. I think that a lot of people would really balk at that, even though I think it would be so good because uh the amount of takeout container waste is just a lot, even though, even when you're doing it recyclable or whatever, I think I think health and safety might have a something to say about it.
Well, I don't think the intent is not to force people, force, you know, restaurants to do it. It allows them the opportunity to do it. So you know, if they wanted to, I mean, there's a million ways to explore this thing as an option. Not like you shall, you know, allow this, but um it could go either way, or it could be that.
You can, yeah, we can look into it and bring something back to council if it's council's desire. It could be accentivized in some way, it could be. We'll look at different options and bring it back to council.
It seems like a much more proactive way to look at waste as opposed to punishing people all the time or being punitive about, you know, ban this, ban that. So I don't have a vote, but I'd be interested in hearing about it. Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Um, you know, in in light of um the city of Arcata pass, passing the ceasefire resolution and members of the public bringing it back before us, I would be interested in uh bringing forward a ceasefire resolution uh kind of along the lines of the one that Arcata passed. If other council members are interested.
Looks like you got three and a half, Leslie. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Moving forward, always forward. City manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, at a previous meeting, council requested an update on SB 43, which is the considered new definition for gravely disabled. And so I have recruited our managing mental health condition Rosen to come and give an update on the status of that and what its rollout looks like. So, welcome, Jacob.
Indeed, welcome.
And let Oz take over. It makes it a lot easier.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I did prepare a brief PowerPoint. All right, so everyone ready to talk like extensive history and mental health law at 8:30 at night? Because this is the best time to do it. Um, no, I I kept it brief. We won't go too far in. I I'd be happy to answer questions. There are certainly a a lot of facets to this, and I just kind of want to lead with that because it cut, cutting it down to this amount of time is a a challenge. And so if if there's any questions, by all means, let me know. Um, so we'll do a briefing on SB 43, that's State Senate Bill 43. Um, that actually had multiple changes. Um, one of the core ones is the adjustments to the definition of gravely disabled as it pertains to 5150s. So a lot of this comes out of the Lanterman Patrick Short Act implemented in 1967. We're just now getting around to, you know, 50, 60 years later, really making some large overhauls to this, uh, because it's much needed. Um, there's patients' rights considerations with that. There's also a ease of access and system overhaul considerations with that. If anyone's interested in the Welfare and Institutions Code, this is the 5,000 section, um, if you are interested in doing some reading. So the goal with the LPS Act was really to to end inappropriate indefinite and involuntary commitment of persons with severe mental illness, intellectual disabilities, developmental delays, uh, and chronic alcoholism. So that chronic alcoholism piece is important because that's already technically a part of the 5150 criteria, um, and is is, there's already codes for that, um, which we'll get into why that that's kind of playing a factor here. One of the issues why that piece hasn't been really taken advantage of is because there aren't a lot of facilities for it. And we'll get more into it a little bit later, but the the question of involuntary substance use treatment in a locked facility, the the efficacy of that is still kind of up for debate. Um, and as such, we just don't have a robust system for uh places for people to go and get treatment of that nature when they're detained involuntarily. So the other pieces of this, uh, the LPS Act was meant to improve maintenance of patients' rights, uh, instead of having kind of the institutions that we used to have 70 years ago where folks could be dropped off, very easily admitted, uh, and institutionalized with very kind of questionable criteria as to whether or not they should be there or to what term they should be there. Um, and so this this really was an aim to improve patients' rights access. Um, however, it also wanted to leave avenues open for involuntary hospitalization when specific criteria were met and to really kind of codify that criteria. Um, that criteria is danger to self, uh, so someone is, as a result of a mental health issue, uh, imminent risk to themselves, um, either they're having thoughts of killing themselves or committing some sort of act where there's going to be significant bodily harm. Um, danger to others, uh, there's an imminent thought as a result of a mental health issue to harm other people. Um, or grave disability, uh, and this is the criteria that SB 43 is targeting adjustments to, but currently gravely disabled uh is essentially as a result of a mental health issue, the individual is not able to provide for their basic needs being food, shelter and clothing. Um, LPS Act and the above criteria outlined also guide LPS conservatorships. So that's also a factor with SB 43, and we'll get into why that is. Um, but the the LPS Act doesn't just guide 5150 law for that brief detainment. It also looks at uh more indefinite detainments um and guides how that happens and what the patient's rights are to having those hearings held um and reviewed. The LPS conservatorship is the most restrictive conservatorship in California. Uh, it does allow for involuntary placement, medication, uh, management and management of finances. So the person who is LPS conserved really does lose a lot of their basic rights, um, which is why there's a lot of law around this. Um, as of March, uh, 2024, DHHS Humboldt County Behavioral Health did have, uh, did report about 147 individuals being LPS conserved. Which I don't have the data on other counties, but for for our little county, that is a lot to manage for our system. Um, and so there is a lot of effort and energy that has to go into to supporting those folks, um, and making sure that they're uh placed at the correct facility, that they're receiving the proper care, um, and that there's oversight and that their their rights are being maintained to the degree uh required. So moving into this gravely disabled definition, um, the old definition, uh, a condition which a person as a result of mental health disorder is unable to provide for their basic personal needs for food, clothing, shelter. SB 43 changes that definition to add what's in red. So SB 43's definition would be a condition in which a person, as a result of a mental health disorder, a severe substance use disorder or a co-occurring mental health and severe substance use disorder is unable to prevent uh or provide for their basic personal needs, which includes food, shelter, clothing, as well as personal safety. And we'll get into that definition and necessary medical care. We'll get into that. So is this slide, I left the new definition up on the left just so it can be referenced. Personal safety uh is in consulting with Humboldt County Behavioral Health and their staff, the way that they're interpreting this currently um is as follows, the ability to survive, uh, to survive safely in the community without involuntary detention or treatment pursuant to this part. Necessary medical care, uh, care which is necessary to prevent serious deterioration of an existing physical medical condition, which if left untreated is likely to result in serious bodily injury. And the impairment of either of these would now fall under that gravely disabled category. So we'd be adding that to the existing criteria. That would apply for 5150s as well as those LPS conservatorships. And so one of the big concerns with this is whether or not the system can handle incorporating, especially into the conservatorship part of the system, folks who are using substances and who are gravely dis, chronically gravely disabled as a result of substance use, um, which is a a concern. So there are pros and cons to this. Um, eh, there are definitely in, I think, from my perspective, I wish there were pieces that were separated out, but alas, this is the bill we have and which is passed. Um, so some of the pros, uh, we're expanding some of the criteria. Lower rates of families having to quote unquote abandon a loved one in order for them to meet criteria. Currently, if someone who's severely mentally ill is experiencing a psychotic episode, say, uh, and they are unable to provide for their own food, shelter or clothing, but a family member is assisting them in attaining those things, technically they don't meet criteria. Which means that we have to instruct that family to effectively abandon their loved one before they will meet criteria for inpatient hospitalization and or an involuntary hold to move towards inpatient hospitalization, which is an awful situation to have to present to a family. Um, by adding that personal safety component or adding that neglect of necessary medical treatment component, that expands our ability to be able to it, eh, put someone on a 5150 without having to tell the family, you need to abandon your loved one. So that's one of the pros. It also helps with neglect of severe medical issues. Um, currently, if someone is neglecting me, medical issues, like critical medical issues like diabetes or other chronic symptoms, as a result of a mental health disorder, say they have delusions that are eh, they don't need medications and they're not actually sick, that i- is very questionable criteria for whether or not someone can actually be detained and held in a hospital involuntarily. And i- in my personal experience, I've seen multiple folks who have been released as a result of the courts, not any physician, but the courts determining that that person because the sole criteria is neglecting medical care, even though it's their mental health that's influencing that, they're released from that detainment because they're unable to hold them because it's a medical issue, not a psychiatric issue. Which is difficult because then you have folks who are kind of slipping and falling through the cracks and they're not able to be treated. So that would also be with that, that medical, that necessary medical treatment criteria be covered um with this new law. Um, it also just provides another tool in the tool belt for providers and law enforcement. And so for folks who are needing treatment, who we want to support and help, we're, we have another tool to be able to get them that treatment. However, some of the cons. Uh, there's no current infrastructure for the substance use piece. Psychiatric health facilities, which is what SV's license is, um, quite literally cannot bill if the primary diagnosis is a substance use disorder. So 51% of the reason for that person's admission has to be related to mental health. If someone is detained just for a substance use disorder, there isn't a a healthcare infrastructure with a locked unit to admit them to. And so what that ends up doing is they would then be stuck in the ER, which is not ideal care for that person. It's also not ideal for the ER or anyone else who then needs to access the ER when their beds are taken up because folks are there on substance use holds. Additionally, again, the efficacy for involuntary treatment of substance use disorders where you're detaining somebody and putting them in a locked unit and then forcing them to detox and then go through substance use treatment, the efficacy, that's questionable. There are eh, there are folks who that may work for. There are also many who that will not. Um, you know, we know it's anywhere from eight to 18 times of trying to get sober before it sticks. Um, and there's a ton of variability in each individual's presentation and each journey to recovery. And so we really just don't we don't have a great standardized method eh on a national or state level of how to provide this type of treatment. Which is partly why the facilities don't exist yet. Uh, and so that's a problem, right? Because if we're going to start detaining folks, we need to be able to treat them. We don't want to take someone's rights away with the intent to treat them and then not be able to follow through with that second piece. The other issue would be the expanded population requiring the services. Um, as we're all very well aware, there's a bed shortage across the state. Um, adding more patients into this pool that requires critical care, um, in high level treatment in a locked setting uh would just continue to overburden the system. So, those are pretty significant cons. Before we kind of get to what's going on with that, uh, we'll move into some of the other changes that this covers though. Um, so SB 43 also expands the sources of evidence submitted to support a petition for conservatorship to include healthcare practitioners as designated by the public guardian. The goal of this is essentially to provide more adequate information during these conservatorship hearings. Um, this is a positive thing. This is helps with maintaining patients' rights. Also, it helps with uh treatment providers being able to ad advocate critically for their patients who are possibly being conserved. It also increases reporting requirements for behavioral health directors and LPS facilities, um, including possible civil monetary pen, uh, penalties if not met. Um, it also adds a step in the conservatorship investigation process, which requires the public guardian to consider whether involuntary treatment um in outpatient uh or through care court um has been considered and whether or not that would be effective. So as AOT in uh assisted outpatient treatment, which we do have a program locally, um, and as care court are implemented across the state, um, essentially modifying the conservatorship investigation process to include requiring a consideration for that step so that we can help treat people at a lower level of care and not necessarily immediately jump to that highest level of care. A lot of this is kind of like building the truck on the way to the fire, which is unfortunate. Um, at the same time, we need overhaul of some of these laws because again, they were initially put in there in the 60s. Um, so we're kind of in this situation where again, there's those pros and cons, right? Um, some of the things we really need clarity on, uh, legal forms have not been adjusted. So, I mean, there isn't a new 5150 yet to include all the different language and whether substance use disorder is on there and how is that going to look and how is that going to adjust to different facilities? Uh, more guidance is still needed on the state's interpretation of the new gravely disabled criteria as it pertains to uh kind of that neglect of medical, necessary medical treatment, um, as well as personal safety. Um, possible new facility licensing categories. Um, eh, if we're going to be building new facilities, then there needs to be an entire agency that's going to monitor those facilities. And how is that going to happen? And is there going to be a separate license for how that looks? Um, we don't have a lot of that info yet. Um, possible Medi-Cal policy changes. Um, if we're not going to build new facilities or do new licensing, then are we going to adjust psychiatric health facilities ability to bill Medi-Cal for substance use disorder treatment? That would have to be looked at. Still need to fund and construct uh some of these facilities if we're going to do that. Some of that may come with the passage of Prop 1 and the grant or the, what is it, the the 6.4 billion dollar block grant that they're pulling. A lot of that is geared specifically toward infrastructure. There's also the Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Project or BCHIP, um, which has been running for four years, five years now, um, that's again, specific for improving infrastructure. Um, however, even if the money is there, we still have, you know, three to four years build time. Um, for example, the BCHIP grant that Humboldt County Behavioral Health was able to secure, that's facility in the triage center in Arcata, which is great that it's coming, but it's 2027, which doesn't help us now with the implementation of this law. And then we also need to train staff. Um, we started doing some of this, Commander LaFrance and I, uh, in collaboration with DHHS Behavioral Health, um, did collaborate to create a training um for local officers and law enforcement and other staff uh to kind of talk about the changes in SB 43, um, as well as go over the 5150 criteria. to kind of talk about the changes in SB 43, um, as well as go over the 5150 criteria and provide that additional training. Um, we had four sessions, and I think we had well over a hundred folks, um, attend all four of those sessions, not each session, but over the course of the four sessions. Um, so the current status, so kind of we have all this, we're building the truck on the way to the fire, so what are counties doing? Most of them have delayed for two years. Um, I think there were only two that didn't. Um, Humboldt County is one of those that has delayed the implementation of SB 43 for two years, and so we'd be looking at a, it'll go into effect January first of twenty twenty-six. That gives us some time to figure out some of these big questions, um, and how this is going to work, um, and at least from CARE's perspective and from, uh, Eureka Police Department's perspective. I mean, we have conversations around SB 43 all the time, um, and are continuing to work with, collaborating with the county to figure out how this is going to be implemented, and it, my guess is it will continue to evolve over the next two years, um, as we work towards finding a solution as to how this will actually look once it goes live. So with that, happy to take questions.
Thank you. I appreciate you so much. Do we have any questions for, um, Mr. Rosen? I was going to say-
Managing Mental Health Condition-
Managing Mental Health Clinician, Rosen? I'm just hearing up here. It was great. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
It doesn't look like we have any questions, but we certainly appreciate all the work that you are doing. EPD is doing YouTube, Commander, over there in the back. So thank you. What's, uh, council reports? Uh, Councilmember Castellano?
I'll be quick. Um, I attended, uh, an HTA-related meeting. I attended a HWMA board meeting. I want to let, so that, um, that we're, we reviewed the budget, and we, um, the board requested to expand, um, financial support for abandoned waste, so that would expand that dumpster program and things like that that were, uh, mentioned earlier. Um, and composting will be delayed. Local composting, it looks like it's going to be delayed for, um, a couple of years, so twenty-twenty-six is more or less what we're looking at.
Hi, thank you very much. Um, let's see, I recently, uh, attended a PIA with the Fire Department. That is a post-incident analysis, where they went over, um, their response to a fire was absolutely fascinating. Uh, they went through the, the whole incident from the call to the resolution, um, who went where, who laid out what lines, what equipment was used or not used. Um, and I just really appreciate seeing that kind of decompression on something to just constantly be looking at your processes and make sure that you're doing things as, as efficiently and smartly as possible, and that everybody is trained on what they need to be doing. Um, just fascinating to watch. Um, firefighter craft is a new, a new phrase. Firefighting craft. That's all it. Um, let's see. Uh, I learned that they do walkthroughs on local businesses, um, especially businesses that might not have sprinklers or lots of older buildings, so the firefighters go into the businesses to prepare themselves, um, in case they need to go in there when it's pitch black with smoke, and, um, that they are going to, again, be organizing a bark in the park. Clearly, there's a lot more going on over there, but that was my big takeaways from the last, uh, things going on at the Fire Department that I can talk about. Um, attended the, uh, Chamber of Commerce two-by-two this morning. What a great group. I love sitting at a table with folks that don't necessarily agree on everything and just hashing things out and asking and answering questions. I really appreciate the collaboration between the city and the chamber. I think it's incredibly productive. Um, I'm looking forward to the Forest Moon Festival, um, on May thirty-first to June the second. That's not for a little while, but I wanted to shout out, because if you, um, have a business or involved with a local business, I highly recommend, uh, getting involved with the Forest Moon Festival. There's lots of ways for folks to participate, whether it's offering, you know, special, um, products or participating in the scavenger hunt. Great way. I love meeting tourists in my business, and I think, um, this would be a great way to have some fun, um, improve, you know, engage in local culture and meet some new people. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Molton, for defining PIA. My mind was going in other directions there. Uh, so my report, I met with, uh, well, the city manager and I met with the community schools director about safety and transportation and the potential ability to provide transit passes for some of our more economically distressed students. Uh, met with constituents about concerns regarding, uh, a potential, or at least the bike plan path. Uh, talked with staff, assuaged some of that, uh, issue there. Attended a workshop and participated, uh, on Humboldt's priorities for statewide housing and climate policy. Largely, we were being asked how particular statewide legislation might impact our smaller, more rural communities here, so that was interesting to have our feedback sought on that. Uh, attended what I believe was the second multicultural night, uh, at Eureka High, where they always seem to have good food and entertainment, uh, from the student club, so I was grateful to have the opportunity for that. And since I'll be out of town next week, seems, uh, Councilmember Bauer will be standing in for me at REDEC, so thank you for that. That's everything.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, thank you. I attended the JPA meeting. I think that was last week, wasn't it? Something like that. Um, I also attended the Humboldt Bay Symposium, and that was a, a part of it. Talked, it was, the theme was climate change, and so you get to see what Caltrans is playing to do with the corridor, and it was, it was really cool, um, cool symposium. Also met with some neighbors to talk about some basis species removal around their properties and how it affects, you know, privacy and that kind of thing. I went to a Cal Poly HSU Athletics Program fundraiser, which was really fun, actually. Huge turnout to support that program. And I am traveling to, uh, CalCities Board Meeting here in a couple, or tomorrow, actually, and along with Councilmember, um, Fernandez, so, um, looking forward to that. I'll have a report next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Conchaire Staloch?
Yeah, so I went to a, um, HCD, the, um, HCD? Yeah, Housing and Community Development, yeah, for California. Learned about some California laws. I didn't get to attend the entire meeting, but I got to be there for about an hour, and it was really helpful. So, um, some of our upcoming conversations, um, about overlays and other things, I feel like I'll have good contributions. I feel like I've got a lot, I gained a lot of information sitting there, and I was impressed that it was tons of, uh, City of Eureka staff, so it was open to lots of people, but boy, we sure had a lot of people from City of Eureka there. Um, and then, um, uh, also got to go to the Chamber two-by-two. I just really appreciate Nancy, all the things that they're rolling out and doing, and I agree with, uh, Councilmember Molton. Um, it's so nice to kind of discuss ideas, and everybody has kind of different impressions or thoughts about what kind of what they're doing, but there is this just, um, collaboration and concern, uh, about making sure that our businesses are successful here, that these, you know, these are our community members that are investing, um, in our community and building a life here. And, um, it's fun to kind of talk about, you know, different ideas about how we can support them better. And then, um, got to have a short call with Senator McGuire's assistant, continuing to kind of move stuff forward with that thing, and, um, not totally related to the city, but about, uh, working with them on getting safely surrendered children named. Um, uh, like I'd mentioned before, they don't, uh, they're not being given names in our county. Um, and so, uh, and then I went to the CASA Gala. Um, CASA is Court Appointed Special Advocates, just in, got to go with a couple of people, including our mayor, and, um, just, it's a wonderful organization. It's a great organization to support, whether it's through donations or volunteering with kids. It's just, um, if you don't know, they not only, um, uh, their advocate that gets appointed to them not only, um, comes and visits them, you know, on a regular basis and takes these children to do special things, but they also will, um, you know, go and advocate, advocate for them in court. They'll help, um, write reports and really kind of try to help be more of their voice and make them feel maybe more stable in their own lives. So they're very important. Um, and that's, I think that's my report.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody. I just wanted to remind folks that the flowers here today are from our Eureka High School Floral Department. We're partnering with the school there, um, trying to support our local youth. Yes, thank you. Right? And, um, I will miss you all next meeting, but I will be on Zoom watching it. Hopefully, I'll be in my right mind. So thanks, everybody, for coming. This meeting is adjourned. Happy Tuesday. That's for Castellano.